Good morning, everyone. I'm going to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of Committee of the Whole on April 15th. I am Councilmember Andrew Johnson, joined today by Councilmembers Gordon, Bono, Bender, Orsami, Frye, and Pomisano. And we have a quorum of the committee. And before us today, we have two items. The first is a discussion on our workforce assessment and diversification. And then we will have our reports from our various committees. So with that, I would like to invite up Patience Ferguson to present to us the Workforce Assessment and Diversification Report.
Chair Johnson and members of the committee. Today, the Human Resources Department will be talking with you about our workforce planning process, and we will be introducing the individuals here later on today that will help in this presentation. As you know, our vision for the city of Minneapolis is to grow a vibrant world-class city with a flourishing economy and a pristine environment with equitable opportunities for success. We believe that one of the key reasons and why we should be concerned about that is because as we continue to grow as a city, we also need to have the human capital, the talent needed, to ensure that this vision becomes a reality. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the context of what we will be talking with you today. And then I'm also going to turn it over to Dr. Mr. Edison. You're not a doctor, are you yet? Mr. Edison, who is our workforce planning manager. We will be giving you the business case for looking at an enterprise view of workforce planning. We'll also give some examples, and we have some departments represented who will highlight some of the current efforts in the departments. And then we will also talk with you a little bit about our workforce planning process, and we'll also discuss next steps. So I'd like to talk with you a little bit about why, as a city, it's important for us not only to think about workforce planning, but also the importance of workforce planning and the importance of understanding some of the challenges associated with that. For the past several decades and for several years, the city of Minneapolis and this entire region has been a region that has had a great, great viable and talented workforce. But what is beginning to happen, and we're not only seeing this in the city of Minneapolis, but also within the entire region, is that our growth is slowing down rapidly in terms of qualified workers. We have an accelerating number of baby boomers. We've also become a net exporter of qualified workers. A recent study by the State Demographer reports that the state of Minnesota is losing qualified talent to other states. In addition, the Minneapolis-St. Paul area is ranked 14 for retention of professional color, professionals of color. Most recently, the Met Council estimates that between two to five people of color by 2040 will be in our workforce and will be people of color. So as I said earlier, this is not just a city concern, this is also a regional concern. So starting now, we really want to think about what can we do from a workforce planning perspective to not only look at what our current needs, but also look at what our future needs are and what we as an enterprise need to do to make sure that we have qualified workers, not only that reflect our community, but that they have the skills and they have the opportunity for success.
I just want to stop you for one second. Is, are the slides supposed to be moving with this?
Yes, and I just forgot.
Oh, no worries. Thank you.
My apologies. So I'm now on the slide that talks about having a vibrant city. And I'll now talk a little bit about the city of Minneapolis. And when I say the city of Minneapolis, I'm referring to the enterprise versus the entire city. So what you see in front of you is a current profile of our city. And this is as the date is reflected of March 31st, 2025. And there's just a couple of things that I'd like to to highlight here. Forty-two percent of our current workforce is over 50 years old. Seventy-five percent of our workforce is Caucasian, and 70% is male. So that is a current snapshot of our city. And as you can see, we are in a situation where we really need to think about what we want our city to look like and what are the skills and tools and opportunities that we have to really rethink how we do work. The next slide that's in front of you is a snapshot of our employee retirement eligibility. And this graph reflects the number of city employees eligible to retire each year based on their pension plan eligibility requirements. Our research shows that generally, employees retire two to three years after they are eligible. So and then the other point is that 2015 is a cumulative number of employees eligible to retire up to this specific point in time. Now what I will do is introduce Mr. Edison, who is our new workforce planning manager for the city of Minneapolis, and he will introduce some of our partners who will give additional perspectives and additional information for each one of you.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Chair Johnson, committee members, as Patience mentioned a minute ago, we're going to talk with you today about thinking differently and talk with you about workforce planning and our plans for the workforce of Minneapolis. So I will introduce a variety of people this morning who will share with you some efforts they have made, they've already made, or that they are making, thank you, that they are making, to contribute to the success at our city. And then I'll do a few closing remarks. So our first speaker is Ms. Kruger, HR Recruiting Manager.
Chair Johnson and committee members. So we've heard a little bit about some of the challenges that we face in retaining and recruiting top talent in our region, as well as the retirement projections that we're facing here at the city. Now let's take a look at the current hiring and recruitment at the city. And the slide is up. And it is important to note that while in state and local, while state and local government hiring has increased over the last two years, public sector employment remains below pre-recession levels. With the goal of being a city that works through a talented and diverse workforce, we need to, we need to ensure that we're continuing to make each hiring opportunity count. In 2014, approximately 10% of the overall city workforce were new hires. Three hundred and seventy-four new hires joining the city represented a significant hiring opportunity, which ultimately increased the diversity of the workforce overall. As you can see, in 2014, roughly 32% of our new hires were females. And referencing the slide that Patience Ferguson showed a little earlier about the city workforce profile, the city workforce profile of percentages of females in the workforce was 29%. So the female percentages that we hired in 2014 were higher than our city's overall percentage. Similarly, the current people of color representation within the city workforce is 24%, while 27% of the new hires were people of color. And while this hiring trend will continue and is continuing in 2015, finding innovative ways to attract and retain diverse employees at the city will continue to remain a focus priority. And the competition for diverse top talent remains strong among other public and private sector organizations, and it continues to grow each year. And with this growth comes the responsibility to think differently about the way we hire based on the current needs of the city, as well as the opportunity to create equity. Some examples of the successes that we've had in thinking and working differently will be highlighted next by representatives that we have here today from the Police Department, Public Works, IT, and CPAD.
Do we have any questions from committee members before we move on? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Councilmember Gordon, actually.
Since you invited questions, I'm just curious if we are, how this compares to the city population as a whole, not as the city enterprise. One of the things I'm keep looking at, and I know we don't really have this goal formally set, but I think there's an assumption, and we talk a lot about how we want our workforce to reflect our city. And it does look like in 2014, we maybe moved a little bit in that direction, but not much. But I wonder if you, if we're looking at that, I noticed in the slides, there isn't a slide doing that, so I've been kind of searching for census data and seeing how it looks. But are we tracking that, and how do you think we compare to the city population overall in terms of these demographics?
Thank you, Chair Johnson, and thank you for the question, Mr. Gordon. We're going to bring Deborah back up too.
2014 really represented the first year that we had a significant opportunity to hire at the city. Previous to that, we were in a either declining or pretty stable workforce number. So it's been very difficult. For instance, in 2012, we only had, I believe, 120 new hires. The year before that, we had 56. The year before that was even smaller. So we've had a few opportunities to hire and increase the diversity of the workforce here at the city, just simply because of the, you know, the economic situation. And we've seen the turnaround in 2014. It is continuing in 2015, and we do absolutely need to continue to find innovative ways to, for instance, in the 2015 budget that was adopted, there were 110 new positions created through Public Works and Police and IT. And with our continuing retirement projections, we should continue to see about 10% of our workforce being new hires every year, which will increase our opportunity to be able to increase the diversity of the workforce to make it more reflective of the community that we serve. Did that answer your question?
Well, I think so. I think it does, but I guess I'm curious about if we're actually tracking it based on the demographics of the city. The first, the new hires up there, the first item talks about males and females. Well, I'm just assuming it's probably about 50/50 in the city. And when I, so I get concerned when I see the first slide that basically says it's 70, I can't remember now, but it seemed like it was vastly male, and we have under 30% maybe that's, that's female. So I'm wondering, why is that? That doesn't seem like it's really what we want in a big picture view. And I start to wonder why, and I'm sure we have a lot of, there's, there's a lot of historic kind of gender rules and pressures through the, the years that women aren't typically police officers, women aren't firefighters, women don't become street maintenance, whatever it is that's got us into kind of this historic sexist mindset that we've been trying to break out of now for 30 or 40 or 60 or 100 years, however you look at it. And then even the new hires here, it seems like we did a little bit better with 32% females versus 68% males, but we just aren't quite there yet. So I guess what would help me in the, in the, or maybe would help policymakers and regular residents in the future is if we just kind of can keep that in mind, how is our efforts comparing and how is it moving us in this, the idea, how well are we reflecting the city? And, and maybe it's going to be very hard with some of it, because I know this is a long view where we have to actually be, be getting people interested in careers, we have to be training them and get them qualified for careers, and I know that we have to have our, our eyes and our focus on qualified people who can actually do really great work for the city as well. And so we can have a little more discussion about it if, too, that'd be great. So if it's all right, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Gordon. We are going to, I think, once Mr. Edison goes through the presentation, particularly at the end, I think that there will be some things that we're putting as a part of an enterprise workforce planning process that will help us gain the rigor that we need to really see where we're going, to identify barriers to those recruitments. And quite frankly, the staff direction will also help in those efforts. So it's not just a one type of strategy, it's multiple strategies that we are working on in partnership with our department, with departments, to help us begin to move toward that. And so what you'll hear at, toward the end are some of the things that we are putting in place that will even give us more rigor in beginning to have to answer those questions.
Great. Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Bono, followed by Councilmember Pomisano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm wondering if you can give us some background in understanding how currently the city evaluates and perhaps scores multilingual, multicultural candidates, because I'm getting a sense that, you know, we need to be able to hire more people of color who are multilingual to help us with our services. And I see here that we have a staff direction that's been ready to be introduced. And so I'm just trying to understand how we currently evaluate and, and I guess prioritize hiring of the skills that we need to reflect a more global workforce. And of course, we live in a global city. So I'm just trying to better understand what is, what is the challenge that we're facing, if we're facing a challenge in that, and how, how does the current hiring process work to help us elevate those candidates that have the skills in both language and culture that our, our city needs in order to better engage and serve those communities?
Our Recruiting Manager.
Councilmember Bono? Absolutely. It is, it is one of the focus areas that we have. There are numerous departments that have multilingual abilities as a requirement to the job. In NCR, for instance, as they go out and work with the neighborhood associations and community groups that they serve. In the Police Department, we have some community service specialists that are multilingual. They are, they're just beginning to look from a classification perspective at adding it to like customer service reps or 3-1-1 agents. And while they're not requirements, they are absolutely highly desirable qualifications that we do give additional points for. So it raises those candidates up in the qualified pool to bring forward to an interview. The challenge has been in the recruitment, and we have been partnering with some of our other departments at the city that have those outreach efforts already in place, NCR, the METP area of CPAD, to help spread the word in, in those organizations around the particular jobs that we have, that we're looking for multilingual skills, like in 3-1-1, customer service representatives, the community service officers, those types of jobs. You're welcome.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of questions, and I'm not sure who's best to answer it, but have we not had a workforce planning effort like this in the past? I mean, just because I don't know. And then secondly, what do the applicant pool statistics look like? So are we, are we hiring more white males by choice after interview? Or are we not seeing, does this reflect applicant pool, is what I'm asking? Or?
Well, thank you for your question. And what I'd like to do is have you hear from some of our examples. I think they will probably address some of the questions that you have. And to answer your question, yes, there are some efforts that are already in place. There are some departments that are further along than others when it comes to workforce planning. And again, I want to give you an opportunity to hear from those departments. Is that okay for now?
Sure. So I'll wait until later for the, and I'll get these questions answered as we go along. That'd be great.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. So that being said, I'd like to bring up our next speaker from our Police Department, Mr. Arandondo, Chief of Staff, and he will be accompanied by Ms. Jean, the HR General.
Chair Johnson, councilmembers. Here today to just talk a little bit about our efforts in terms of our hiring and recruitment efforts specifically related to our Community Service Officer Program that many of you may be aware of. The Community Service Officer Program is really a conduit for us to look at community members who are looking at participating within the Minneapolis Police Department. Some of those are looking at entry-level positions from Community Service Officer to eventually becoming hired and sworn police officers. And then we have other community members who simply want to serve as Community Service Officers in that capacity as their career. Chief Harto has found that our Community Service Officer position is one of the best ways that we can look at diversity, both cultural diversity as well as gender diversity within the Police Department. I know that Ms. Ferguson has mentioned that, that we're really trying to increase those numbers. The Minneapolis Police Department, as in 2014 as other departments, we saw considerable attrition through retirements. We also have a workforce right now within the Police Department where I believe over 60% of our department is over the age of 40. So we want to look at legacy building, and we believe that the Community Service Officer position and program is one of those areas we can both capture gender as well as people of color through that. At this time, Mr. Jean, if you'd like to add.
Chair Johnson and councilmembers, the Minneapolis Police Department has provided a, or has committed to a strong effort in recruiting and outreach to attract and retain diverse candidates of different races and gender. We've revived the multicultural recruitment team. We've also dedicated a recruitment coordinator to coordinate all of the recruitment efforts. Also, I reached out to various recruitment sources so that we can attract diverse candidates to the Police Department. In doing that, the HR Department has also reviewed the hiring and selection process, partnering with the Police Department to look at creative ways of creating a more inclusive selection process. Some of the ways of doing that, we've eliminated screening barriers. Previously in the past, we required proof of college readiness for our community service officers. That wasn't necessarily a determining factor of determining whether or not someone was qualified. We removed that or eliminated that process. We also had reviewed our fitness exam assessment as well and eliminated that as a pass and fail system to more of assessing our potential to meeting the physical agility requirements of our police officers, as we recognize that many of our CSOs, we have them for a longer period of time where we can build the skills and physical requirements needed to become successful in the role of an officer. One of the other ways that we thought or think differently in our selection process is changing our oral panel selection process, is inviting those who are interested and are committed to the community and bringing in a diverse workforce as part of the oral exams. Also providing them with training in anti-bias interviewing, giving them best practices so that they are equipped to participate in the oral exams in a way that is objective and fair for all applicants.
Great. And I do have a question related to this. Maybe this is more directed at HR around CSO classes. I participate in the OJP, one of the OJP subcommittees, and this topic comes up around diversity of the force fairly frequently, and I think it's a pretty big topic in parts of our city and across the city as well. And one of the kind of interesting parts to this is that we've heard things from other subcommittee group members, such as there were nine women of color that applied to be CSO officers and only one was hired. So what is, I guess, maybe it's more of just an interest in transparency or seeing more analysis around why are people washing out before they end up getting, I guess, to the final stages of getting into that CSO class? Why are they being disqualified or screened out? I know you mentioned there's been some improvements made around proof of college readiness and reviewing the fitness exam, but what other barriers might there be around that? And are these demographics around our CSO program, are they representative of the applicant pool, which is something Councilmember Pomisano was also kind of talking about as well?
Chair Johnson, councilmembers, to your point, I'll let Ms. Jean talk about the applicant pool. But in terms of different factors or dynamics which can eliminate an applicant, certainly once the application is submitted, there are other measures that go through in place, and one of those is the background process. So there are certain criteria, certain requirements that an applicant must meet during that background process. I can tell you that Chief Harto has been working with HR very closely in terms of looking at some of those components in the background. We've looked at it historically. I think our background process has improved over decades, but we continue to look at, are there any types of systemic or cultural barriers within our background process that could possibly potentially eliminate qualified candidates, particularly qualified candidates of color? So that is something that we're continually always looking at. I think, as Ms. Jean mentioned, one of the things that we're also looking at in terms of our oral board panels is making sure that we have individuals that sit on those panels that have a sensitive cultural competency as it relates to that. And so when they're looking across the table to those applicants or looking at the package of materials, if they, they have a sense of, you know, what things make a good community service officer that may not be what traditionally we've looked at in years past. So but in terms of elimination, there are certainly our criterias and requirements within the background process that could ultimately eliminate some of our candidates. As far as the application pool, if you wanted to.
From the application process to the hiring, to the actual hiring phase, you know, to, I think we have a large group of applicants who apply from very, very diverse pools. Does the hire reflect that completely? I think there's definitely adverse impact analysis that shows that we can do better at the final outcome of the process. And I think in the efforts of process improvement and continuous review of our hiring selection and selection process, I hope we can get to that point where that we can have a, a great reflection of the initial numbers of applicants.
And I guess I just have one follow-up on that. Are people given a reason when they're not selected as to why they weren't, whether it's the background process or what have you?
Applicants are notified of reasons for not selection.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Orsami.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. My question is regarding the number of CSOs, we have the pie, we have the breakdown, but what was the total number in each year that applied?
That applied?
Yes.
Councilmember, I do not have that total number available at this point.
And do you know if the number of applicants has increased over the years, so from 2013, 2014, 2015? Are we doing better, are more people applying?
Most definitely, the total number of applicants have increased. I think that is due to the commitment and effort of the recruitment team going out to various recruitment sources.
And also, when I see the breakdown in terms of the black applicants, I think there's a, a great positive jump of 26% in 2015. I mean, what do you attribute that to?
You know, I, what, I would say that that would be definitely be a huge part of the multicultural recruitment team, going out and spreading the word more, meeting with our young applicants and applicants of job fairs, being very targeted, doing targeted recruitment. I think that is a huge factor that has contributed to that increase.
Okay. If you just could send us the numbers as well, I'd be very much interested in the total, how many people applied, how many were rejected, and so on and so forth.
We can do that.
All right. Thank you.
And just to add on to that, too, whatever reasons they're washed out of the program for, it would be great to have that breakdown of reasons why people might not be getting in. With that, Councilmember Bono.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to briefly comment that I've engaged the chief on the recruitment video, and I know I've brought this up to you before. I think our recruitment tools and plans are really important here, and who is delivering that message is really important here. So I would, I would like to offer myself to work with you on that, and I've expressed, you know, interest in figuring out how we can engage the Latino community more and doing recruitment. interest in figuring out how we can engage the Latino community more in doing recruitment and really getting ourselves into those opportunities where we can excite people to look at this as a job opportunity for the future. So I'm just going to share the MPD recruitment video we have now with the council members here, but I would like to make sure we prioritize that moving forward because it's quite outdated and it doesn't really present the values that we as a city should present when it comes to recruiting police officers that are here to work with our community, to build harmony with our community. And so I just want to offer myself as part of that work plan, and if we can follow up after this meeting to figure out more of what that recruitment plan is like and what our office can do to help you.
Chair Johnson, Councilmember Conno, I appreciate your outreach. And we spoke several months ago about our, probably you'd consider it a 1970s outdated recruitment video. I can tell you that we have recently finished a new recruitment video that is much more current. We'll make sure that all of our council members receive that. There's no disco balls in that or anything like that, so I think you will enjoy the new video. But we will continue to work with you on some of the suggestions that you had for us, so.
Sure. Will you be uploading that to your website? Because right now, the old one is still up.
Yeah, I know that, Councilmember Conno, I know that our communications folks are working on getting that uploaded, but it has been completed and I can certainly get you all an advance view of that, so. Yes. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. So as you can see, there's things going on in the Police Department. Our next speaker will share with us some of the things that are going on in Public Works, because Public Works also has some programs that are addressing, thinking differently, and addressing workforce planning. Oh, thank you. And from Public Works, we have Ms. Hamilton, Deputy Director, accompanied by Ms. Petty, our HR General.
Good morning, Chair Johnson and council members. We're really excited to tell you about what we've been doing in Public Works. We've had some really good success with diversifying some of our Service Worker One positions. The position of Public Works Service Worker One, we have about 300 employees that fill this position classification in Public Works. So it's a really large number of our employees. Service Worker Ones are responsible for collecting the solid waste and recycling. They are responsible for patching potholes, plowing snow, building roads, maintaining and repairing our stormwater and our sanitary sewer system, putting the traffic signs in place. So a wide, wide variety of duties across the city, primarily our field workforce. So a big number. And we thought, we think, and still believe that Service Worker Ones, it's a great opportunity. It's probably our best opportunity to really diversify the department because it's such a large number of employees in the department. So in 2013, we hired a number of Service Worker Ones, and frankly, we were disappointed in the diversity. We thought we would have more diversity in our candidate pool than we found. And so before we undertook a new hiring process in 2014, we took a really hard look at what we were doing and what we could change in order to get more diversity in that candidate pool. And so we made several significant changes. One of the biggest changes we made is we created a new position classification called Service Worker One Trainee. And for this, to be a trainee, you do not need construction maintenance laboring experience and you don't need commercial driving experience. To be a Service Worker One, you need to have a commercial driver's license and a one year of experience in construction or maintenance activities. So we created a new position that doesn't require those things. And so you can be hired if you simply have a high school diploma or GED or equivalent. And then we will hire you and we will train you. And after a year's time, we will help you get your CDL. We will get you that year of experience because if you're working as a trainee for a year, boom, you have that experience. And then the trainees will be promoted to a Service Worker One position. And so that, so through that year, we provide the training necessary. The other big change we did is we undertook a much more vigorous recruitment process. And this is where I'll turn it over to Jill Petty. Jill's been an instrumental partner in this initiative to diversify our workforce, and she'll talk about some of the recruitment that we've done.
Thank you, Committee Chair Johnson, committee members. In looking at, thinking about how we do our work and trying to figure out how we work differently and to assist our department in accomplishing its goals to diversify, we took several efforts. We took a step back and looked at several opportunities. We saw this as an opportunity to advance the goals of Public Works. And so in that end, there were seven specific efforts that we took in the recruitment cycle this time around for the Public Works Service Worker. Several of those opportunities provided us with a variety and a wide plethora of diverse candidates. So just to kind of summarize some of those efforts, we had engaged in 12 community information sessions to talk about the Public Works Service Worker One and the Public Works Service Worker Trainee positions. We went out to various community agencies, to just name a few, the Summit Academy OIC. We worked with Emerge. We worked with Eastside Neighborhood Services. We had information sessions at American Indian OIC, the Brian Call Center, all with the purpose of engaging the community, getting the word out and talking about Public Works Service Worker One and the Public Works Service Trainee position. We also translated our recruitment documents into three different languages, again, in an effort to widen our net to attract a diverse population. We also did radio advertisement, which included a 30-day run on two prominent radio stations in the community. KMOJ was one, WREY Hispanic speaking station. We also did two, Heidi Hamilton and myself did two, on-air interviews with KMOJ. We also engaged several community partners. We worked with the Summit Academy OIC organization, and their women were hard hat programs to help us tap into their talent and to their students. We also worked with Minneapolis Urban League to tap into their resources as well, as we talked about this particular opportunity and how they can partner with us and work with and increasing the word and getting the word out about our efforts. We also worked with our internal partners. We worked with Marie Larson and the MDT program, Project Renew. They gave us some wonderful advice as to how we can reach out. We also worked with NCR, the Neighborhood Community Relations Team, to also help us spread the word. So we, again, our efforts resulted in a phenomenal turnaround from our 2013 efforts. Let's talk a little bit about the results. We had a total number of eligible candidates on our list of 381. Of those candidates, 149 met the requirements to be a Service Worker One, 232 met the requirements to become a Service Worker Trainee. And of that, just kind of roughly percentages of the diversity in those numbers, 41.5% of the individuals hired were Caucasian, 29.3% of the individuals hired from these efforts were African-American, 7.3% of the applicants hired were Hispanic, and 2.4% were Native American. And we had 19.5% who identified themselves as more than one race. And so we think, we feel pretty good about our results, and I think our work paid off in the end in what we see in the numbers that we hired.
We do have a question from Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this was really exciting to hear about a program that's focused on, you know, a place where we're hiring a lot of people, and particularly appreciate the innovation in opening up opportunities to people who weren't, you know, didn't have the qualifications previously. But I wondered if you could talk a bit about how you recruit for other positions within Public Works, like our transportation engineer positions, and if we are able to see more diversity in gender and race in those positions as well? And I know there are many fewer positions, but I suspect that that is a place in our city as well where we tend to have not a great representation.
Good question. Thank you. So when we look at the other opportunities that present themselves within the Public Works Department, we do have administrative clerical positions, we have engineer-level positions. And what we do when we're working with our partners and the hiring managers, we are also talking about what are your goals for diversity? What is your current workforce look like? Is there an opportunity here to reach out and to diversify that applicant pool? And to that end, we do work with them to identify places where we could advertise differently. For example, we have recently been advertising heavily with the Women's Society of Engineers. We've also reached out to the Hispanic Society for Engineers. We've also reached out to the Black Engineers Association. So we are taking a look at every opportunity that comes available in Public Works and try to figure out what would be a good target to increase the diversity in those applicant pools.
All right.
Okay, thank you. We have two more departments that we want to hear from. And the first one is Information Technology. Ms. Cousins, Deputy CIO, accompanied by Ms. Westman, HR General.
Hello, Chair Johnson, council members. I'm Beth Cousins from the IT Department. So we have 33 new positions to fill in IT for our desk-side support and service desk. We do want to achieve racial diversity. To do that, we need a pool of applicants that is diverse. We're also interested in creating a pipeline for more advanced IT positions. We sometimes get zero qualified candidates for our advanced IT position. So if we can get entry-level people and develop them for IT as well as other city positions, that will be a real win for us. So we partnered with CPED, primarily Deb Bar-Helgen, who is here with NCR and with HR to discuss recruitment strategies, primarily focused on getting diverse candidates applying for the IT Ready Program, which provides A-plus certification, which prepares people for entry-level IT positions. And we used a permit employee that we had to get the word out. We also brought the IT Ready Program for the cycle that just finished this month from the suburbs to Minneapolis to help address transportation barriers for our less advantaged community members who can't get to the suburbs. And then we used Deb Bar-Helgen's CPED network to communicate open positions in addition to the traditional ways to get the word out. And we have received or achieved phenomenal success so far. We're still very much in the process, and Lisa and her staff have been great partners. We have hired a service desk supervisor. He is a Mong American veteran who served in Afghanistan with the Marine Corps. He was the most qualified candidate for this position and one with the greatest potential. He will be starting on the 27th. We have hired a service or desk-side support supervisor. She is a Caucasian woman who also will be starting on the 27th. She was the most qualified candidate. For the desk-side supervisor position, we had 33% of the applicants were people of color and 10 and 1/2% were women. We are in the process of, we've finished posting the positions, in the process of vetting the applicant pool. For desk-side technicians, about 40% of them are people of color, only 11% are women. We have a total of 340 applicants. This is a problem we never have in IT. So many applicants just sort through. We're just delighted and can't thank our HR partners, CPED and NCR, for helping us with that. For the supervisor position of the service desk, 37% were people of color and almost 23% were women. We have a really diverse pool of candidates for the service desk agents. 40% of them, on average, are people of color, 18% are women. You have heard Otto talk about the challenge of women in computer science. When I graduated with a bachelor's degree in 1990, I often was the only female in a class. 18 years later, I got a master's degree in computer science from the University of Minnesota, still was often the only woman in a class. So we will be challenged to get to that 50% female. Our numbers are dropping. So that's where we are. We feel like we've got a great candidate pool. Certainly, we'll provide you numbers if you're interested. Just this morning, Lisa was texting another person in HR to find out. I wasn't really certain whether the woman that we hired was Caucasian, you know. You don't know necessarily by looking at someone, but she is. So any questions, we're happy to answer them.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much. And now we will have Ms. Bar-Helgen come up and speak to us from CPED.
Thank you. Thank you. We're very pleased to be here today. I'll give you a brief overview of our services to employers, and then I want to turn it over briefly to Marie Larson from my office for a few specifics on how we've worked with city departments. So we're here today to be a resource to city departments for their hiring needs. Our nationally recognized employment and training system in Minneapolis, every day connects job seekers to, with jobs and employers with talent. Our new way of doing business in today's labor market really is about diving much deeper with employers, helping them examine their recruitment and hiring practices so that they are not automatically excluding qualified unemployed candidates. Businesses seeking applicants via our diverse network of providers and the increase of traffic at recent job fairs and hiring events, of which we're sponsoring eight job fairs this year, really highlight the demand for employment services and the hope that comes along with a growing economy. We see this worker shortage trend continuing over the long term as businesses experience the increased retirement of baby boomers and the career movement of opportunities for those currently unemployed that allows for the backfilling of existing positions. I also wanted to give you just kind of some of our, just some context of demographics of our programs currently. Nearly 80% of successful job seekers in Minneapolis Employment and Training-supported programs were minorities. In 2014, through our network of 14 neighborhood-based employment service providers, Minneapolis Employment and Training served over 4,500 youth and adults looking for work. In youth programs alone, 95% of participants were minority youth ages 14 to 21. Our programs are 52% female, 40% male. 100% of program participants, both youth and adults, are either low-income, unemployed, or a youth with a barrier to employment or school. So basically, we want to make, help make real connections between job seekers to city job openings, making sure that unemployed, unemployed and underemployed Minneapolis residents know that the city of Minneapolis is an awesome place to work. So with that, I will introduce Marie Larson, who can get into specifics. She's the Industry Relations Manager with Employment and Training.
Thank you to Ms. Bar-Helgen, and I want to say thank you in particular to the city HR Department for the opportunity to talk about how much, actually, how much fun it is to work with them and to help them to do outreach into communities that we serve through our employment and training programs in CPED. I'm Marie Larson. I'm the Industry Relations Manager, and the work that I do is primarily centered on talking to employers about their business hiring needs. And workforce planning as a topic has been hot for a while, and it will continue to be so in the upcoming years as we're seeing tightening in the labor market and more demand for diversity and for actually candidates from this local labor market to step forward and to look for positions that require a variety of skill sets. So when I heard, for instance, that the Public Works Department was going to be looking for Public Works Service Worker One positions and had opened up a trainee possibility to expand that net beyond the positions that had previously been posted, this was a very exciting opportunity for employment and training because we do help people who are going back to school to update their skill sets and to earn certifications, to find work after they're done with training programs. And in addition, part of our job in employment and training is to essentially do education to the potential future workforce to help them to understand how they can translate those credentials into a job. So in that sense, we're actually giving information about the city of Minneapolis to counselors, to those recruiters on the ground who deliver our employment services, and we essentially become ambassadors for the city of Minneapolis to talk about how we're a great place to work and why we want people to apply. And essentially making that case for a sector, the public sector, that really didn't do a lot of active recruiting and in fact didn't do a lot of hiring for several years is very, very important, that we want to be able to position ourselves as an employer of choice in competition with many other employers of choice. Like, what would you do now that you're done with the training program? So the way that I approached the Public Works opportunity was to take a look at the training programs that we had sent people through in about this past year or so and reach out to those training sites that can be a little bit more non-traditional. We're talking about IT Ready here today, but there are also multiple training resources that are out there that people access when they're not your typical kind of enrolled in a credit-bearing training program. They'd be maybe looking at other training options and accessing some different types of community-based training programs or even licensed and accredited alternative schools that do CDL training, for instance. So I was able to reach out to that network in addition to accessing our employment service providers and ask for assistance with reaching out to their diverse trainees to find people to come and apply for the Public Works jobs. And I believe that that strategy was highly successful because we were able to expand our recruiting channels beyond where we had been the year before. our recruiting channels beyond where we had been the year before quite dramatically, and I think that those outcomes really are very, very strong and interesting. So that's just one example. If you have any questions, I can certainly answer more of those if you would like. But thank you for the opportunity, and I think I'll just go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Edison for concluding remarks. Thank you.
Thank you for all your questions and all your presentations. As you can see, there are many examples that comes from our departments about how people are looking for ways to think differently. And we're going to have to continue to think differently if we want to meet our goals and our objectives. So part of what our, part of our thinking, part of our approach to addressing this, as some of you asked questions about earlier, is to use workforce planning. To implement workforce planning, which is a systematic, long-term view of staffing, it includes recruiting, some of the things that we already do, recruiting, selecting, hiring, developing, and retention, but doing it in a more systematic manner, looking three to five years out, making sure that we have the ability to meet the needs of our, with our workforce today as well as in the future for our city. So looking at what it is, when we talk about workforce planning, workforce planning is providing people with the skills necessary for the required, as I mentioned, and the right numbers at the right time at the right place, and it's not a one-time event. It's something that is ongoing, that we do, in a way similar to how we do our business planning and our strategic planning, looking out to make sure that we have the people in place to implement our mission. So in addition to looking at very basic statistics, including a profile of the city similar to what you saw earlier, looking at the age of our employees, looking at the gender and all the things that you had some of the questions about, it is adding predictive analytics to that. And it's not a crystal ball, but it will give us an opportunity to tell what the future would look like for our workforce. So why do we use workforce planning to address these issues? One of the major reasons is because we have an aging workforce. Some of you maybe have noticed that. And because people with key skills are heading for retirement. The skills needed for tomorrow's workforce may be different than the skills we have today, and we need to be prepared for it. So workforce planning gives us an opportunity to avoid those skill shortages and overages. The shortages add stress to our work environment, the overages add stress to our budgets. So we want to increase, it gives us an opportunity to increase our focus on succession planning as well as succession management and not looking at just replacement hiring, but hiring based on the needs of the city. So part of the reason why we want to use it is to build on the examples that you just heard from our departments and create more of those examples. So we want to build on those successes. When it comes to workforce planning, it's pretty straightforward and simple. It's a simple process that's designed to deal with very complex issues and complex problems. So it starts with a focus on the strategic direction of the city. It has to be linked to what we have planned. And then assessing the current workforce, identifying the needs, and then also identifying our future needs, looking at gaps that might be created and looking at ways to close those gaps. And then creating a plan and putting it in place that will give us an opportunity to smoothly transition from where we are today to where we want to be in the future. And then simply evaluate and continuously monitor our process. So I'd like you to think about what a city needs to run, as I come to wrapping up this presentation. Workforce planning can help us bring the city's values to fruition, as far as one benefit, and help us accomplish our goals. Our goal is of having one Minneapolis because it fosters an environment that is attractive to all our residents. And it will help ensure that we have a highly engaged and competent workforce that can provide the services for our residents that we know they need. The second goal it addresses is having a city that works. Workforce planning will help move the dial on equity by fostering an environment that's perceived as fair and just to everyone. And then the goal of having a great place to live. Workforce planning will help move the dial on equity again by fostering an environment that is perceived as fair and equitable to all of our citizens. So in conclusion, I asked you earlier, what did you need to run a city? One of the things you need is funding, having the right amount of money. That's simple and straightforward. We also need to have the right technology to be able to compete with the people we're trying to attract people from. We're competing with the public and private sector. And then the right amount of highly skilled and motivated people. There's an author, Jim Collins, that says in one of his bestselling books, Good to Great, he highlights that the most important ingredient in any organization is people because they implement everything we do. So workforce planning is ensuring that we have the right amount of those people and the right numbers at the right time. So we're asking you today for your support and your encouragement as departments take on workforce planning. We want to make workforce planning an integral part of the way we run our city. Thank you very much.
All right. And with that, we do have a question or comment from Councilmember Palmasana.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Both, a comment and also a question. One thing that I especially appreciate about roles in the city and refilling things as people retire and they've had a job for a very long time that you haven't quite highlighted as much, but it's true, is that a lot of times when people have been in a role for ten, twenty years, that role has morphed into such a set of job responsibilities that that is a very difficult spot to fill. And in part, that's been because of cuts of staff over the years. You know, they took on part of somebody else's job, and then another job, someone left and it went unfilled. And so I appreciate the problem of trying to get people to fill these gaps when people that have been with the city for a long time have left. I also think, and this is something that I would honestly put on HR's shoulders from the aspect of workforce planning, I hope that our planning also includes things like new ways to attract really smart people and to be exciting ourselves as a city. I see, you know, city government is not classically being, you know, one of the most cutting-edge kinds of things that people talk about wanting to go into after college, and I think we can go a long way to make that a little bit more interesting and exciting. I think that we need to be able to have new ways to show career mobility. And maybe that's, you know, other large employers in this area have like a two-year rotational program, and I don't know how the unions would feel about something like that, but from a two-year program where people could see a number of different departments and have a set of experiences and see where their strengths are or where their interests lie, and for us to try out a whole new set of people who are interested in not staying somewhere and getting into a job that they plan to be in for the rest of their lives, that would more fit, you know, what I see the job market being. I just, I think what we're, what are we doing for onboarding becomes a big issue with retaining great talent, and I think it's a gap, frankly. So I just, I hope that's something that we also make sure that we're excited about as we look at this, is attracting smart people and being exciting ourselves. And I think we can do a lot of interesting things that way to get them.
Thank you. So to Chair Johnson and Committee Member Palmasana, thank you for your comment. And I think we all agree that one of the things that we all respect for our people that's worked here for a lot of years is the work that they've done, and we're looking for ways that they can leave a legacy, that we can respect all those years of experience. And I really appreciate the other comments that you made, and we take on your challenge. Did anyone else have any comments?
Do we have any other questions or comments from councilmembers? All right. With that, we do have a couple of motions. Oh, Cam Gordon, Councilmember.
And this is just a comment. It isn't necessarily a question, and I could also have said it after the staff direction, which I'm very supportive of. But I just wanted to note that for somebody who's been here a while, this is dramatically different from what we're used to hearing. And I have to give a lot of credit to the departments for the creativity that they've used to try to move us in diversifying our workforce and setting goals and having this kind of information. We have this problem with our police department in particular because we have to work under this thing called the Rule of Three, which actually doesn't give us much choice based on testing results and what happens. So this whole community support officer program is a way to get around that, I think, and kind of open up things for us. And it's great to see it being used more and how successful it is. I also think that the fact that Public Works was willing to look at this new position, analyze it, figure out what were some of the barriers, how could we get around those and create this kind of a beginning level with training position is amazing and a breakthrough. Public Works had a notorious record and maybe before many of the people who are here now, but, and actually government in general, for getting set in our ways, for not really paying attention to affirmative action or diversity very much and plodding along. And these, I think, are significant. I think it's to the credit of everybody here. We've also ourselves had some discussions about racial equity and toolkits, and I think we, several months ago, kind of asked people, please think about racial equity issues when you're making these kinds of decisions, and please focus on hiring and promotion and those kinds of things. And we're actually seeing staff leadership and rank-and-file taking action and working hard on this, and I think it's fantastic. And I just wanted to make sure that that gets clearly noted from up here.
On behalf of all of us here, thank you so much for your comments.
Great. Seeing no further questions or comments, I'll move to receive and file the presentation. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And we have a staff directive in front of us. This is something that staff and Council Vice President Glidden have been working on. The staff direction is to develop a workforce planning process that supports the enterprise with some specifics here around assessment of workforce needs for a minimum of three to five years, an assessment of opportunities and challenges in diversifying the workforce, and engagement around best practices in order to remove some unnecessary requirements from the process. So I will move that. Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Worsami.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Johnson. What I would like to do is, I'd like to move to amend the staff direction, just to add, and I think you have it in front of you, engagement of human resources best practices in assessment of position descriptions to include fluency in one of the most commonly-used languages in the city, as well as multicultural competency as a desired, required skill, in particular on jobs that involve direct services. And basically to see, you know, the languages, the main languages that are spoken, Spanish, Hmong, Somali, among others, as an asset rather than, you know, just something that, you know, the minority community speaks, but as an asset to the city and should be taken into account when we're hiring people.
Great. So we have a motion to amend before us. Do we have any discussion on that motion? Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, with regards to Councilmember Worsami's motion, I'm wondering if we can take out the words "one of," just because that probably gives us a little bit more flexibility in terms of, you know, how we approach this. You know, I think when it says, "in one of the most commonly-used languages," I mean, I think it just puts a question mark as to, I mean, it could be read both ways. One way would be just to put a question mark as to which one is the most commonly-used language, and the other one would be, well, one of the five or whatever. So it makes perfect sense, but, you know, if it's okay with the author, I mean, if we could take the "one of" out, that would make it much clearer.
I think that works.
All right. Any additional discussion on the amendment, the motion? All right. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. The amendment carries. Now, back to the main motion as amended. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstain? All right. The motion carries. With that, we are moving on to reports of committees. And I did want to take just a moment to mention that we have some councilmembers absent that are out on city business today, and I didn't mention that upfront, but I just wanted to acknowledge that. So it's actually been a pretty busy day for a number of councilmembers dealing with city issues. With that, we do have Councilmember Frye, who will be delivering the Community Development and Regulatory Services Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've got nine items that we're bringing forward for this Friday. The first, item number one, are a bunch of liquor, business, and gambling applications. Actually, there aren't any gambling, but both liquor and business. Number two is a resolution approving a licensed settlement conference with Aqua City Motel. Number three is approving a business license for Azul nightclub in North Loop. Number four is approving a business license for Harriet Inn on South Lyndale. Five is a licensed settlement conference involving Metro Inn Motel. Six is a rental dwelling license reinstatement. Number seven is approving the consolidated plan for, approving the consolidated plan for the schedule for budget. Number eight is the license fees for tiered rental licenses and condo ordinance. Happy to answer any questions on that topic. And number nine is employment training services, authorizing the issuance of requests or proposals to establish a list of eligible providers. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm not seeing any questions. Thank you. With that, Intergovernmental Relations Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm pulling it up right now. So our items include two issues. Number one, our Minneapolis Sister Cities is approving a temporary postponement of the creation of any new sister city connections and directing staff to evaluate the number of sister cities Minneapolis currently has and the capacity to have more, evaluate the engagement and involvement of sister cities that Minneapolis has at the current time and whether they should be continued, and see, explore other options, including tiered status or other reviewed mechanisms for sister city connections. Our second item has been referred to report to the Ways and Means Committee, and that is a federal representation services contract authorizing extension of a contract with Fager BD Consulting for federal representation services through July 31st of 2015 and increasing by $50,000 for an amount not to exceed $410,000 to allow IGR staff to complete a new request for proposals.
Great. Not seeing any questions or discussion, so thank you. We'll move on to the Transportation and Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chairman Reich is at Transportation Advisory Board today, so I will be reading these eight items for consideration on Friday. The first, it was a discussion on use of city-owned infrastructure. It was an ordinance relating to streets and sidewalks, establishing a process and procedure to obtain permits and attach communications equipment to that city-owned infrastructure, including a resolution establishing fees for permits and a right-of-way poll attachment policy. The second is a Powderhorn West residential area street resurfacing project. We refer to the following through Ways and Means, so you'll also receive that from, in Chair Quincy's report. Thirty-fourth Avenue South and Forty-third Street East Street Resurfacing Project, submission for 2015 Hennepin County bike and sidewalk grant funding, Minnehaha Avenue Reconstruction Project Cooperative Agreement, the Lake Nukomis Area Private Stormwater Management Practices, the Nicolet Central Modern Streetcar Project, and the acceptance of three low and responsive bids. Any questions?
Not seeing any questions. Thank you. With that, Ways and Means Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ways and Means will bring forward five items for your consideration on Friday. The first is a passage of an ordinance related to Minneapolis cable communication franchises. This is with, amends the Comcast franchise provisions. Item number two would be the legal settlement. Item number three is the acceptance of a donation of billboard display time from Clear Channel Outdoor. Item number four is the approval of mayoral appointments to the Capitol Long Range Improvement Committee. And number five would be the passage of a resolution approving the amendment to the 2015 general appropriation, increasing budgets and funds as part of the 2014 reappropriation to the 2015 operating budget, excuse me, is commonly known as our rollover process, and happy to answer any questions on any of those five items.
Not seeing any questions, so thank you for the report. And with that, Zoning and Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have three items from zoning and planning. The first is denying an appeal regarding a conditional use permit for height at 4353 Upton Avenue South and 2720 44th Street West. The second item is approving a vacation application for Southwest High School, and then we also have a postponed item from last time with the Franklin Street Bakery.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any questions on that. So with that, we have concluded business, and we are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.